I have asked Mr. Reeves, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning tonight, to give us an overview of the Ohio Report Card. So he's going to be doing that. He and his team did this presentation for our administrative team last week, and it was really helpful, so I asked him to do it for you tonight. As always, I would just start by saying, and I'm sure that Mr. Reeves will cover this as well, that, you know, the state report card is based on tests that are snapshots, so it's certainly not all that we're doing with our kids, but it is important for us to just look and be aware of what areas we're doing well in, what areas we'd like to do better in, and Scott does a nice job of putting that together for us. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Thank you. And thank you, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, Ms. Hamburg, Mrs. Marshall, members of the board. I'd like to give a summary overview of our district's performance on the 2024 District Report Card, and I'll highlight our performance on each of the six components on the report card and give a snapshot comparison to the outcomes from this report card and the 2017 report card to get a sense of the expanded opportunities of our students. We've included two links in this presentation so that members of our community can have a quick and easy access to more detailed information on our report card. This first link takes you to our district report card. Most of the slides in this presentation are screenshots of our report card, but the link takes you to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce website, which allows for a more interactive experience and access to additional charts graphs and multi-year trend information. The second link is to the guide to the 2023-2024 Ohio School Report Cards. This 19-page guide provides an overview and explanation of the key components on the 2024 report card. And like Mrs. Hamburg said, I'd like to say that the report card is just one measure of our students' performance based on one standardized test at one point in time. We have many other measures to track student progress from benchmarks, assessments within our curriculum, grades that students earn in classes, to service experiences such as Bystown participation, activities within our community, performing arts and extracurricular performances, and high-level experiences such as the creative activity and service projects of our international baccalaureate diploma students, and the take-action plans of our global scholars diploma students, of which Westerville City Schools has the largest global scholars program in the state involving upwards of 150 students. And that's just a few of the many experiences that our students have. So when you look at the report card features, Mick McElwain and I did a presentation a couple of years ago when our report card transitioned from reporting A through F grades to moving to stars. And so the state report card is still continuing that. It goes from one to five stars, with one being the lowest, needs significant support, all the way to significantly exceeds state standards with five stars. There are five areas that are rated of the six components: the achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation rate, and early literacy. Currently not rated is our career, college career workforce and military readiness component, and we'll talk about all of those later and go into each of those components. So, as you can see, our overall rating is four stars, which means as a district as a whole, our total student performance exceeds state standards. So how does the state arrive at an overall rating? The district receives points for each of the five rated components, based on their students' level of performance. Obviously, the higher the performance, the more points earned. Each component is weighted. The achievement and progress component each receive the greatest weight at 28.6%, and the other three components each receive a weight of 14.3%. The weighted points are then summed up to determine the overall rating. So our first component to look at is our achievement component. And as you will see, we earned four stars in our achievement component, which means, again, our students exceeded state standards. We also exceeded state standards last year. The graph you are seeing is a multi-year trend of our performance index indicator. The performance index measures the performance level results for all tests in grades three through our high school and, of course, exams, not just whether the students were proficient or above or not. There are six total levels a student can score, from the lowest, limited, basic, proficient, accomplished, advanced, and advanced plus. The higher achievement levels receive larger weights in the performance index calculation. And I apologize for the small print, but you will see that this year, Westerville City Schools reached a performance index score of 89.1. We've increased our PI score each year since our return to school from COVID. On the report card, we also have performance indicators, which report on the percentage of students scoring proficient or higher on each of our Ohio State tests. Those measures are not rated, only reported. This slide shows our performance index scores in the form of a line graph, and you can see clearly the upward trend of the performance of our The next component is the progress component, where we also achieved four stars and exceeded the state's standards. This is also termed overall value-added progress measure. What does value-added mean? It refers to a statistical analysis used to measure the impact of district schools and teachers on academic growth for groups of students from year to year. It's your one-year growth. And how is it measured? In two different components, academic growth, which is assessed by comparing achievement over three consecutive years, and then your growth index indicates the academic growth of the district in relation to the state as a whole. So not only to yourself, but to the entire performance of the state. And then the effect size measures the strong relationship between those two variables. Four stars means we had a growth index of at least plus two and an effect size of less than .01. If you ask me how we got to that, I'm going to call Scott Dorn up here for that calculus equation, because I don't know that I can get that one. But the statistical rating got us four stars. This graph shows the representation of growth in each of our tests. The blue and green, if you can kind of tell the colors, the blue and greens show that we've met or exceeded the state's expectation growth on those tests. And you can see the green in the fourth grade and the fifth grade test, and the dark blues in those grade levels. The yellow and reds show that we moderately or greatly fell short of the state's expectation of growth. With the gray band, which you see mostly in science, and then below, mathematics one and two, there is no value-added data, mostly because we do not give those tests in those particular years. The top line, where it says all grades, is the aggregate of all schools, which demonstrated that as a whole, we have exceeded the student growth expectation and thus earned our four stars. The next component that makes up our overall rating is the early literacy component. This is where we earned three stars and met our state standard. You can see the three measures that are used to determine the overall rating to get the stars in the early literacy component and the weight of each of those measures. The first is the proficiency in third-grade reading, which reports how many students score proficient or higher on the reading segment of the Ohio State Test for Third Grade English Language Arts. We had 71.4% of our third-grade students hit that mark. The second measure is promotion to fourth grade, and as you can see, we had 99.8. Virtually all of our third graders progressed on to fourth grade. The third measure, improving K3 literacy, uses two consecutive years of data to evaluate the percentage of students moving to become on-track with their reading. The 32.6% does not refer to all students. That percentage means that of the students that did not score proficient on the third-grade reading test, 32.6 of those students have moved to on-track with their reading. Students who are off-track are placed on what is called a RIMP, or Reading Improvement and Monitoring Plan, to give them the support they need until they get on-track by scoring proficient on a subsequent state test. So you can see the sum of our combined percentages equals 71.6%, which falls, as you can see at the top, within the range of three stars. And just to give you a sense of the great work that is done and the challenges that our teachers face to support our third-grade readers, last year, and this has kind of become a typical occurrence of mobility within our district, we had 89 third graders who enrolled in Westerville City Schools after the first day of school. And so our teachers take students who had not been in our system, meet them where they are, and grow them until they reach reading proficiency. The gap closing component has the most pieces to it, and there's a lot of moving parts. And again, this year, we earned five stars in the gap closing component for the second year in a row, which means we significantly exceeded the state's standards. There are multiple measures that collectively determine the gap closure rating, and we'll go through those. The function of the gap closure component is meant to measure how each of our individual demographic groups of students are performing, not just how our students as a whole are performing. Of the state's 10 identified demographic groups, all students, Asian and Pacific Islanders, Hispanic, white non-Hispanic, American Indian, and the later Alaskan Native, Black non-Hispanic, multiracial, English learner, economically disadvantaged, and students with disability, Westerville City Schools has nine of those 10 demographics, which speaks to the richness of our diverse student population. The demographic group that we don't have enough students to qualify for is the American Indian demographic, of which we would need a minimum of 15 students for that demographic to be represented in our school district. So the graphs on the left, and I know they're hard to see, represent the achievement of our student groups based on their expected performance index score in math and English Language Arts. Now, in short, the red dot represents the expected standard, and the bar graph, the colored bars, represents their actual performance. So on the left, for both math and English Language Arts, each of our demographic groups exceeded their expected performance index. So of all of our nine for English and math, the bar goes beyond the goal that's set for them, which is indicated by the red dot on there. The graph to the right represents their growth index that we just talked about. In English Language Arts, at the top right, only one group, our English learners, met the growth target, which is great, but the others fell short of the state's goal. That doesn't mean that those other groups didn't meet proficiency on individual tests, and it didn't mean that they didn't grow, which every group except one had a positive growth index. It just means they didn't meet the state's calculated growth standard of plus 2.0. In math, at the bottom right, every demographic group experienced growth, and all but one did meet the 2.0 growth standard. Another measure in the gap closing component is the English Language Proficiency Improvement Indicator. This measure is not about how English learners performed on the Ohio State Tests, but rather the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment, or what we call the OELPA. Again, the red dot shows the goal of the state for those students. The bar shows the actual performance. Our English Language Arts, our English learner students exceeded their success goal on the OELPA. Last year, we had 192 students in our English learner program successfully test out. Another measure on the gap closing calculation is the performance of our gifted students. The gifted value-added rating for growth exceeds, and that's that growth rating again, it exceeds the state's goal. To give you a sense of the expectation of our gifted students, and not just ours, but gifted students around the state, remember that the district's overall performance index score was 89.1. Our gifted students achieved a performance index score of 116.9. However, the state's target was 118.1, which is why it shows not met, but it is still an incredibly high performance index number. We are also showing not met in the gifted identification and services area, because we did not meet the equity index goal, which determines how well our identified gifted population matches our overall student population. Last year, we had 2,862 gifted students of that group. 72% of them were white, which does not match our overall demographic. But I will tell you, a decade ago, our gifted population was closer to 95% white. So we have made some very intentional efforts to ensure that the gifted students within all of our demographic groups are represented. This measure of the gap closure is our chronic absenteeism goals. To be considered chronically absent means a student has missed 10% or more of instructional time for any reason, excused or unexcused. Our goal from the state this year was 18.3, and that is a goal that you meet by going under that. And so we had a percentage of 17.9. And we have work to do with that, especially since COVID. If you go back to 2017, our chronic absenteeism rate was 8.7%. Chronic absenteeism is a problem throughout the state of Ohio, with an average in some districts being above 25% of students being considered chronically absent. The governor and the Department of Education and Workforce just announced within the last couple of weeks a five-year goal to reduce chronic absenteeism by half. They have a site developed on their website to provide structures and strategies for districts to use. The final measure that collectively determines the gap closure rating is the graduation rate of our different demographic groups. As you can see from the red dots compared to their performance bar, all but one of our student groups met their graduation rate goal. The one group that missed the graduation rate goal, their goal was 93.1%, and they achieved a rate of 92.7%. So very, very close by literally one student, but still a very, very high graduation rate for that particular group. And the fifth and final component that determines our overall rating is our graduation rate component. We achieved four stars, which exceeds, again, the state's standard. There are two weighted measures that determine the weighting for this component. Our four-year graduation rate, which is weighted at 60%, and our five-year graduation rate, which is weighted at 40%. Our four-year rate, which is the bottom line, kind of the lighter line on the bottom, which measures the class of 2023, our four-year graduation rate is 92.8%. Our five-year graduation rate for the class of 2022, which is the line above, is 95.9%. Those graduation rates demonstrate a steady increase over the last decade. In fact, we had not been this high since 2012, when our graduation rate was 92.1, and we exceeded that. And it's been over a decade since we've achieved a graduation rate to this level. We attribute this to the appropriate interventions in our high schools from the time students are freshmen, begin to identify students who are not on track to graduate, and provide the appropriate interventions for them, including our partnership with our Equal Opportunity for Success Program at our Academic Enrichment Facility, to ensure we are able to celebrate with these students at graduation every Memorial Day weekend. This component, the College Career Workforce and Military Readiness Component slide, is not currently rated and is not part of determining our overall rating, but instead reports on the readiness of our graduates to continue on to post-secondary education, to enter the workforce, or to enter the armed forces. This graph shows items such as our ACT and SAT participation and remediation free rates. It shows the percentage of our graduates who earn honors diploma, earn industry-recognized credentials, earn dual enrollment credit, and how they score on AP and IB exams. At the end of this presentation, I have a comparison slide to show the actual percentages of some of those measures. This slide continues the reporting of the multiple readiness measures of our graduates. You'll see a star next to the pre-apprentice measure, and we're excited about two opportunities that have been developed with the work of Matt Meisner and Ann Baldwin. We have two growing programs to mention. One was students in a pre-apprentice program with Performance Auto down on Morris Road and Cleveland Avenue, and they are getting authentic automotive technician experiences. And another with a few of our students working with the city of Westerville's Electrical Department, where they are learning how to change and repair streetlights and change street signs and traffic lights and all of those things. And if you're lucky, one time you might ride by and look up to some of the folks in the bucket of changing streetlights, and they very well may be our kids enjoying a pre-apprentice program. And we look forward to expanding more authentic learning experiences for our students like this in the future. This final measure of this non-rated component shows the percentage of students that enter college beyond graduation and enter the workforce and the military. And again, I have a slide coming up that shows some of these percentages. And that brings me for a moment to our final slide. Now, our district's mission is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world with which we live. For me, the final two components, the graduation rate and the college career military readiness demonstrates our meeting that mission beyond all other items for me on this report card. Of course, we pay close attention to all of our data, our third-grade data, our middle-school data, our high school test, all our benchmarks that are checkpoints along the way to graduation. It informs us of which students are on-track and those who need support to ensure that they do graduate and are ready for that changing world. We often find that our performance is compared to past performance. I thought I'd share some of the readiness benchmarks from 2017, a few years prior to COVID, to this year's report card, a few years beyond COVID. When you look at some of these measures, we have a couple of demographic measures at the top. When we look at the percent of students of color we had in our district in 2017, it was 42.7%. We are now currently at 50%, and I would imagine that our report card next year will show that as a district, students of color are collectively the majority in our district. Economically disadvantaged in 2017 was 34.4%, and now it is nearly 10% higher at 43.7%. I mention our demographic changes because research suggests that performance on standardized tests are directly correlated to characteristics like race, economic status, and education level of the family. So looking at the fact that our district has become more racially diverse, and we've experienced an increase in students designated as economically disadvantaged, that same research would suggest that we should be performing worse. But the fact that we are not is a testament to our teachers in the classroom, the support we provide our students and our families, and the leadership within our buildings and our district. If you look at some of the other measures, I call it Aqua turquoise. The ones in Aqua, we have increased in those measures since 2017, despite the growing diversity that we've had. Our graduation rate is higher in 2014. Our performance index score was 90.6 in 2017. It's 89.1 now, but you saw from the charts and the graphs, we are continually trending upward to get to the point where our performance index score is equaling where we were prior to COVID. Our AP participation, our Advanced Placement courses, we actually have more students participating in our AP programs, and a far more diverse set of students in those classrooms than we had in 2017. And equally, the students scoring three or more is increased in 2024 compared to 2017. And it's a modest increase, but an increase. When you look at the number of students honoring, getting an honors diploma, it's slightly less, and the percentage of kids going within two years of graduating from high school, going on to college, at 2017, it was 68.4% of our students. Last year, it was 66.6. So slightly lower, but still statistically, all of those are statistically within range of one another. There are two super-big call-ups that I wanted to make, and that's why I highlighted them in green. When you look at students earning dual credit, that's students who are earning college credit while they are in high school. In 2017, only 2% of our graduates did. Last year, 20%. That is an astonishing amount of students who are earning college credit and giving them the advantages they need to be competitive when they leave us. And it saves also our families a lot of intuition, especially for those who go to school in-state. Students earning industry credentials, in 2017, only 1.3% of our students earned industry credentials. In 2024, 10% of our kids. So when you look at our mission of graduating kids and making sure they are college and career-ready, we are by far providing those experience just seven years later from when we were building our pathways, which also included many of our college coursework inside. In the mauve, fuchsia?
Purple?
Purple.
Lavender?
Lavender color. You see the components that mirror the components from our rating against the state's standards for us in 2017 to now. In 2017, in our achievement, progress, and gap closing, we earned a D, a D, and an F as a district. This year, we exceeded, exceeded, and greatly exceeded the state's performance in those same areas. I will say we are comparing Payers to Apple, because the rating system was different and the test was different. Also, 2017 was the last year we did paper pencil tests, so we moved to online tests beginning in 2018. So there are some differences that our students endured, and our students who are juniors and seniors would have been a part of both of these performances. Our early literacy is the same, and our graduation rate equates to about the same. College readiness now is not rated. So when you look at our college readiness exams, our ACT test takers in 2017, we had 20, or, excuse me, 73% of our students take the AC test in 2017. 2017 was the first year that the state implemented paying for all juniors to take a college readiness exam. And we had about three-quarters of our students show up that March, and in 2024, that number is now 26.4, specifically college-bound students. Well, what's the difference? In 2017, we had only 9.4% of our kids take the ACT. Those were all college-bound students, mostly-
SAT.
SAT, thank you. We had, taking the SAT, less than 10% of our students, college-bound, probably, and I'm making it just an inference, going to college outside of our state, because our state is a big ACT state, and a lot of schools, especially on the eastern and west coast, prefer the SAT. Now, that is 81% of our kids are taking the SAT. So it's almost a flip-flop inverse. And so after two years of taking the ACT, as a district, we switched so that all of our juniors were taking the SAT instead. Why did we do that? Because we made a significant investment in our AP coursework, which is a college board. We made significant investment in our 10th graders and our 11th graders taking the PSAT. So it made sense to us that if we were making investments and spending time and experiencing our students to college board curriculum, that we should take, uh-oh, think jumped right out of my hand, that we should take the college board exam. And here's what we saw as a result of that. The two-year average for when we took the ACT, the percent of students hitting the college readiness benchmark in English was 53.15, and reading 43.8, and math 42%. The three-year average after we switched to the SAT, we saw a jump in evidence-based reading and writing to 63.44%, which is 10% higher than English, 20% higher than the reading from the ACT. And in math, our students in that three-year average scored 50.12%. If you were to take a look at the students in the class of 2023, our college-bound students who took the ACT had an average composite of 23.7. The national average was 19.5. When you look at the performance of the class of 2023 on the SAT, which, again, every student took, regardless of their post-high school choices, the Westerville City students averaged 508 on math, which was the national average, and just below the national average, 510 on the evidence-based reading and writing, and the national average was 520. And that's all of our students, regardless of their post-high school choices, compared with the nation's college-bound students. So I say all that to say, our students continue to perform at a high level. Our graduates walk away from Westerville City Schools with a world-class education, and we are continuing to make headway to achieve our mission of preparing students to be contributors to the changing world in which we live. And I'll take any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Okay.
Well, actually, listening to you, like, this is a snapshot of how our district's doing, right? There's a lot of complexities in these numbers.
Sure.
So as a parent or a community member, we're looking at these, like, what should they should be thinking about? Because, you know, you can take a look at this and say, oh, we're not meeting a standard, or we're exceeding, but there's so much more richness to this. And then also, how do we use this report card in making decisions for the district?
If I were to- If I were to advise a parent or a family, I would advise them to look specifically at their child because it's their child and their child's experience that they are going to be most concerned with. And are their children on pace? Are their children at or above grade level? How are their children doing on the test? And then they engage with their schools, their teachers, their, their building levels to see if they are above, are they getting the enrichment they need? If they're, they need intervention, what interventions are being provided for them? So that's really an individual thing than to look at it as a whole because the breadth of our families are going to be all over the place in terms of the achievement. We use this, we use this data, but we also have benchmark measures along the way that inform us and are pretty good, give us a pretty good predictor of how our students are going to score. We use benchmark tests within our curriculum. Our elementary uses a battery of assessments. We have grades, we have things like I-Ready in middle school and elementary school, which has turned to be a good predictor of if students are on grade level. And those who aren't, as we are working on our framework, which we call Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, MTSS, to ensure across our system, our students are getting the needs met that they have, whether they're enriching, bless you, somebody back there, either enriching or intervention services, they need to make sure that they get to grade level or beyond so that as they march through our system. We have several folks, whether they're instructional coaches, reading specialists, curriculum specialists, who go in and provide supports and look at the data. They put together professional development, they put together teams to look at the curriculum and resources that we have to make sure that the teachers have the most appropriate ways to support our kids.
Thank you. My question was to point out all the various ways that we're tracking data and how we're making sure that we're meeting our marks and really centering the students in their learning.
Hi, thank you so much. Lot to dig into and think about there. There's just two, two pieces, I'm hoping you can talk about the connection or lack thereof between them. And that's when you look at the early literacy component, right? And then, and then our gap closure for English learners. So can you talk to us for just a minute about the early literacy component? And Ms. Ralford, I don't know if, if there's anything you'll want to add, but just on the early literacy component, how does our proportion of English language learners factor into that? In that, you know, when you've got a lot of young people that are learning English, and they're also learning to read?
Yes.
Right?
They are, they're not exempt from that.
They're not, right?
Cheryl, I'd invite you to come and join me.
Thank you. But then you look at the gap closure for English language learners. So I just wanted to, like, put those two next to each other, I think it's slides nine and ten.
Yeah.
Right, and talk about that for a minute.
So, good evening. I hope I state this correctly because I'm, you're testing my memory a little bit.
Thank you for this.
So our EL learners, if they've not been in the country, I think it's the first three years, they're not counted in the same way. And so what you would, they may not show up in the report card right away, but they do show up in the data that we're monitoring on a day-to-day basis. So we're digging in their performance data to make sure that we are meeting them where they are and helping to grow them so that they can eventually no longer need the extra support from our EL staff. And we do find that we have a high percentage of students who are EL learners who no long, who test out of needing EL services, so that's a good thing for our district. When it comes to state test, it gets hard. It gets really hard to gauge that specific number of students who will meet the, up to proficient. We have a high number of students who are EL learners who are on RIMPs, and they will be on a RIMP for a while because they need multiple levels of instruction and interventions in order to be at a, at the rate in which a student who was born and raised in the US is able to function.
I think an important thing to point out too, could you talk a little bit about the diagnostics? So one of those components in the early literacy rating has to do with basically how we are diagnosing kids who are off track early on. And it, it, districts choose their diagnostic tools, so there's not one set diagnostic that the whole state uses. So that component, out of all these, I think is a little bit muddy.
It is.
Anyway, I don't know if that's the best word to use, but.
So I think muddy is probably as clear as mud when it comes to early literacy because it has the proficiency rate, it has the diagnostic score, it has the percentage of students who are moving from off-track to on-track. So there are different opportunities, but all those pieces and parts determine that component of the report card. I think if we look at it from a broader lens, a student, an EL student who is new to country, they're receiving tier, classroom instruction within, from the teacher, like everyone else, but then they also receive some pull-out services on top of that day-to-day instruction. So I think we have to work within the parameters of what does the instruction look like for them in the day-to-day? Because some of the measures, they may not perform as, at a higher rate, but we are seeing steady growth for those students. It's, it's a little hard to meet the.
Thank you, sort of put you on the spot there, sorry.
You sure did, I didn't even have a chance to think it through, but.
I was thinking about those two together and, and looking at the ELA growth by student group, right? When you look at the English learners, which they performed very well.
And our EL learners, do they get some exemptions because they have to be in the country long enough before we start counting that score towards them? So we make the investment, we grow them, and then ultimately, we want them to be able to show the signs of they're, they no longer need that support.
Great, thank you both so much, thanks.
I hope that was clear as mud.
Just wanted to dive in a little bit, thanks.
Thank you, Cheryl.